This is the third Tuesday in the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
Welcome, everybody, to our City Council Meeting Night. We actually have a public hearing that we are going to do first here. And this is a public hearing have to do with the urban deer management plan. And I do call this meeting to order. In attendance, we have all council members except for Paul Hagan and as well as Mayor Brian Smith. The purpose of the hearing, and I'll read this. "Notice is hereby given that the City of Wapaka Common Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 21, 2017 at 6:00 p.m. in the Council Chamber, City Hall 111 South Main Street, Wapaka, Wisconsin, to hear testimony on the city's proposed urban deer management plan." The proposed plan and related information can be found on the city's website at www.cityofwapaka.org. The public hearing will be for the purpose of giving an opportunity for any person interested, their attorneys or agents, to be heard. So, at this time, what we're doing with the public hearing is just getting comments from the public. And we'll start with testimony in favor of this plan that was put together that councilperson, Alan Kealan, chaired. So we'd be looking for anybody that would like to give testimony in favor of the deer management plan. Please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor? Yes, sir.
Well, my name is Mr. Thomas Scholberg. I live at 516 Larson Street, Wapaka, Wisconsin. As you know, I addressed this problem a couple of years ago. When I was addressed a couple of years ago, I was basically told by the council, well, here's what happened. I lost 125 strawberry plants, over 100 raspberry plants. My wife has lost 25 hostas, 35 lilies, and that was back then. And two years ago, two little kids were playing outside, almost got run over by deer. This was 10 o'clock in the morning. And the council basically told me a few years ago, "Well, Tom, if you wouldn't plant the strawberry plants, or the hostas, or the raspberries, we wouldn't have this problem. You wouldn't have this problem." Well, the problem's gotten worse. I drive on Highland--
Tom, now, let's make sure that you say that that's your recollection of what was said.
Okay, that was my recollection.
All right, thank you.
I love to plant the garden. I'm a gardener, okay? I'm a handicap person, but I like to be outside gardening. I feel I have a right to have my raspberries and my strawberries, which I did replace, which all got chewed down again. And my wife still loses her hostas. She still loses her daylilies. We've got a serious problem in this city. Other cities I know, I think it's Kimberly, has started a plan where they're allowing archery in the city limits, but certain areas where the problem exists. You have to have the landowners or the homeowners consent to come on their property. With the city of Wapaka, I have five people call me a couple of years ago saying, "Tom, you can come on our land, you know, this bill passes, and take care of the problem. We want you to help us, because we're sick of losing our plants and our gardening and stuff like that." And I feel it's only getting worse, because I got my deer this last year, didn't get one gun hunting, but by going underneath the 22 overpass, going on 22, somebody hit a nice doe right in the city limits, and I was allowed to take it. And I drive on Highland Drive a lot to drive a handicap person around. The other morning, I had eight deer walk in front of me. Eight deer. Now, some of these are all does, they're pregnant, they're going to increase, and we're going to have a bigger, more problem on our hands. And I feel this has got to be addressed, and that's all I want to say as of this time, okay? Thank you for your time.
So, Tom, you had a chance to look at the plan, and you are in favor of the plan?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to give testimony in favor of the deer management plan? Any other testimony in favor?
Well, this is kind of redundant, since I sat on the committee, but I have to see this through. Thank you very much, neighbor. I'm on Lake Street and sat on the ad hoc committee in favor of the managed archery hunt. I think my neighbor here just underscores--
Can you give me your--
Oh, right. Susan Renowiki, 720 East Lake Street.
Thank you.
I think our friend here just underscores one of the many opinions that I've encountered when I've been discussing this with Wapaka residents, city residents, and I hope we go through with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony in favor of--
My name is Susan Young, and I live on Washington Street. I love to garden. I love the deer. But there are too many of them in a small space. In the past, I have battled with them. I have spent thousands of dollars on plants, trees, shrubs. They no longer exist. And this is with spraying them and with putting netting around some of the plants. I like seeing the deer in the town, but there needs to be some management, because there are too many deer for what the woods supply in the way of food, and that's why they go into our gardens. So that's all I have to say, but I think there needs to be some management for this problem.
Thank you. Any other testimony in favor of the plan?
I'm Terry Dufour. I live at 515 Park Avenue. I'm not sure if I'm in favor of this plan. I would like to see the deer damage decrease somehow. I have a question about the plan as outlined in the newspaper last week. Excuse me. With the restrictions on size of property that can be hunted and the requirement that, as I understood it, any shooting be done downhill, I wonder just how much of the city would be even be affected by the proposal as read. But I and my wife are both very much in favor of seeing fewer deer wandering through our neighborhood and eating basically anything they want in our backyard. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Terry. I think as we move forward, you're going to see, if I remember right, you guys had maps showing where those properties did qualify, and we'll continue to educate as we move forward ourselves as well as the public.
May I clarify a point?
Sure.
The proposed hunt is an organized bow hunt on parcels of 10 acres or more. Anybody can hunt within the city limit on any parcel if they have permission of the landowner and the adjacent neighbors within 100 yards, as long as it's being shot down and you have a permit from the city. So there are two separate issues here. One is the organized bow hunt that is being proposed versus the existing law ordinance that allows hunting already.
They also have to have a license from the--
From the city. Well, yeah.
You have to have your DNR license, too. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Alan. Thanks. Any other testimony? Yes, ma'am.
Barb Hean, 308 South Main Street. I was also on the committee, and I guess I want to, you know, just for the record, say I am in favor of a managed deer hunt. And if I would also like to at least see, at the very least, maybe a better organized hunt where the, right now, currently hunters can get a license and hunt within the city limits. But it would be helpful to have more data on how successful that is so that we can see how many deer are being harvested by them. And yes, we've had a lot of damage at our home with plants, and I've looked into, you know, I'm now planting only bushes and trabs that will, that are deer resistant, but sometimes that doesn't work. And we've spent a lot of money on, and I've spent a lot of time coming up with concoctions to spray, and nothing seems to work other than purchased liquid fens and things like that that cost a lot of money, because you have to ply it almost every other day to keep the deer away. Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. Any other testimony in favor of the deer management plan, urban deer management plan? Next, then, we would take testimony in opposition. If there's anybody that would like to speak to the council on the opposition of this urban deer management plan, again, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Limit your time to three minutes or less. Any testimony in opposition?
Diane Pamrenki, 310 High Street, right in the middle of Deer Central. However, when I bought my home, I knew there were deer. I enjoyed watching them. I had them this big next to my dryer vent. I still enjoy them. I have hostas surrounding my home. I start spraying liquid fence from the, right now. As soon as something starts to sprout up, I start to spray. And I've had beautiful hostas all the time. I have lilacs and other bushes that are also good feed, quote unquote, for those animals. My concern is not worrying about the plants. We have a city that's filled with green space, which is wonderful, and it's, that's one of the reasons that I think our area is so popular. We have lakes, we have wooded areas in the city limits. You have parks and everything else. There's just green space everywhere. This is going to be something that will not go away, because you hunt them once in a while. They're going to continue to come back. It's not just the deer that caused the damage, it's chipmunks and squirrels and everything else. So how far are you going to go? I'm a little concerned about the, I'm thinking that this managed hunt and the hunters involved there hopefully are really well researched as individuals. I also am very concerned about that, you know, a landowner in the city limits being able to basically give an okay to just about any fruit loop in the world. I've had deer with arrows in them show up in my backyard, and we've given that meat through the DNR to families that needed the meat and so on. So this is already occurring. I worry about young children finding deer like that and so on, and the traumatic thing that that might cause them. I don't know how long that rule or law has been on the books about letting just anyone being able to hunt. I'm real concerned about that and think that that should be looked at at another time. I understand the rationale when it comes to deer diseases and so on. Again, I believe it's something that is going to continue to go on just because of our location and the green spaces in our lands here. Because people want certain plants and so on, I don't count that as a good reason to kill animals, and that's my thought.
Thank you, Diane. Any other testimony in opposition? Any other testimony in opposition? Anybody that gave testimony in favor, is there anything else that you would like to say that you didn't have a chance to? Any other testimony and rebuttal in favor of?
Just to our, was it Diane?
Yes.
Diane. To address some of your concerns regarding the safety or the perhaps people who are unqualified hunters would be just kind of wandering about properties, our proposal includes a pretty stringent vetting of these hunters. They need to pass some fairly rigorous tests that would still be in design. No one's property who, if they did not want anyone hunting on their property, certainly they would not be permitted to do so. It wouldn't be like your property would just sound like, "You got 10 acres, we're hunting it." I mean, that wouldn't happen. So I hope that that maybe assures you somewhat that it's not just being haphazardly examined.
Okay. Let's, thank you. All right. Any other testimony and rebuttal in favor? Hearing none, I declare this hearing closed at 6:18 p.m. We're going to start the council meeting in just a couple of minutes. This plan is not on the agenda for tonight's meeting, so we will be voting, council, you will be discussing and voting on this plan at the next council meeting, which is actually on a Wednesday.
April 5.
Yeah, April, Wednesday, April 5. Normally, we have it on Tuesday, but that is an election night, so we move it to the next day. So if you're interested, stop back again on Wednesday, April 5, and it will be part of our agenda. Thank you, for those of you that came just for this purpose. I appreciate your comments, as well as I think the council does, too. Thank you very much. Nielsen. Okay. Here we go. Let's start the regular City Council meeting. I do call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll ask Sandy to read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the Common Council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And roll call, Sandy.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Kealan.
Here.
Scott Pritchardski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Okay. Next is our consent agenda. These are items that we take with one motion, and council votes on those all with that one motion. If there are any items that are on the consent agenda, we would ask at this time, I guess we have one addition, right?
Some additions.
Some additions. We'll do that first, okay?
Okay. Under number five, consent agenda, letter A, monthly reports. Number two, the building inspector's report. Number five, the development director's report. And number four, the police chief's reports were all uploaded to the city website on Monday, March 20, 2017.
Okay. So with those additions to the consent agenda, are there any items that council would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda where we would vote on those on an individual basis? Hearing none, we would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda with those Motion by Dave Peterson, seconded by Eric Olson, that we approve the consent agenda with those additions that Sandy had mentioned. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Regular agenda, Sandy.
All right. Under number nine, new business, letter D. It's the cropping agreement with John Schrader. A map was distributed. And also, under number nine, new business, letter C. City Hall office furniture replacement purchase information was uploaded to the city website on Monday, March 20, 2017. That's it.
Okay. With those additions, we would be looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion by Kealan, seconded by Hackett, that we approve the regular agenda with those two additions. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll. Oh, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. I thought I got to decide. All right. I guess not. All right. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have, meet the candidate. We have Mr. Troy Nielsen, who is a candidate for the Wapaka County Circuit Court Judge. Troy?
I'll do the most difficult thing for an attorney to do, and I'll try to keep this short.
I'll make sure you do.
Good. For those that don't know me, my name is Troy Nielsen. I'm one of the two candidates running here in Wapaka County to replace the soon-to-be retiring Judge Kirk, who has decided that 35-plus years on the bench is enough. I've been an attorney for just over nine years now. I live in Scandinavia. My entire legal career has included working on cases here in Wapaka County. In the nine-plus years I've handled, I would approximately say about 3,000 cases here in the county, most of those in the form of adult criminal law cases, with some exceptions, those being juvenile delinquency cases, cases involving abused children, cases involving individuals suffering from mental health-related issues. But my primary focus in my legal career has been on criminal law cases, and that's the thing that I believe distinguishes me from Attorney Hendrickson, who's the other candidate. The county, I think, is being presented with two qualified and competent candidates, but the county's also being presented with two candidates that come from vastly different legal careers. As I said, my career has included upwards of 3,000 cases in the, primarily in the criminal law field, whereas Attorney Hendrickson, his experience is in the civil world and not in the criminal law world. And that is the distinguishing difference between he and I. And the reason I think my experience makes me best suited for the position is that when I've talked to our judges here in this county and some of the judges in our neighboring county to get a sense as to how much of their caseload is made up of criminal law cases, I've heard some judges tell me around 50%. I've had some judges tell me about 70% of their caseload is criminal law cases. Whichever number you accept, the majority of the cases that our judges are hearing and deciding have, are in the area of criminal law, which is, again, where I have all of my experience essentially. And the reason that's important is, while every single case that comes into a courtroom is absolutely the most important thing to the people involved and to the judge involved on that particular day, not many cases have an impact outside of the courtroom, except for criminal law cases. Criminal law cases and the decisions judges make as it relates to criminal law cases has an impact on the city of Wapaka, on the county of Wapaka, and on all the other townships and villages I've spoken to prior to tonight. And that's important to understand. We want, we should want a judge that, on day one, has the legal wherewithal to make the decisions that are important to the city and to the county in the form of criminal law cases. And I think the most difficult decision that our judges here in Wapaka are struggling with these days as it relates to criminal law cases is what to do when we get to sentencing those convicted of repeat impaired driving offenses and those convicted of crimes that involve some form of drug use, because as your chief could attest to, most of the criminal law cases that have drug components rarely include just purely possession of this or possession of that. It's usually a theft, or a burglary, or an auto theft, something of that component. And the judge has to decide a sentencing, do we, does the judge impose a sentence that is more consistent with a punitive aspect, jail, prison, or more of a treatment and rehabilitation prospect like probation, like a stop which is offered by the county for alcohol-related, well, for OWIs, or the soon-to-be up and running drug court? And that's the toughest decision I think a judge has to make, and I think those are the decisions that have long-lasting impact, because if Chief Ozellback, in the earlier part of his career when he was actually arresting people and doing a little bit less of the administrative stuff, you know, he would arrest somebody, let's say for a burglary, and in many ways, that's the easiest part of the process, because when we get to the sentencing part, it's what do we do with this person? And that's a tough decision. It's a decision that I am capable and qualified to deal with. It's a decision that I want to make. I think I'm qualified to make. So that's why I ask members in the council and members in the gallery here that in two weeks' time, when you go to your respective voting location and voting booth, I'm asking you to vote for me, because I think my legal experience makes me the most qualified. And I want to thank you guys for taking time to allow me to come speak. I appreciate it, and that's all I have. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, Troy. Thanks for coming in and introducing yourself to us.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Yeah, you, too. All right, let's move on then to the public input time of our meeting. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience, left in the audience, or council or staff that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please give your name and address and limit your time to three minutes or less. Any public input from anybody? All right, let's move on then to department announcements and correspondence, and as always, we'll start with Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My report starts on page five of the packet, and just finished up the audit work, field work with the auditors last week. We have removed one of the major weaknesses from last year's management letter, which was the internal controls. By adding the additional part-time position and segregating duties within my department, we were able to remove that major weakness in our audit. I'm happy to report that. Otherwise, we're finishing up, closing the books. We'll be doing the PSC report, which is due by April 1, and then the state report. It is still on schedule to present the financial statements at the May, the second meeting in May council meeting. Right on schedule. That's all.
All right. Thanks, Kathy. Peg, library.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Well, we invite all of you to come to our library and imagine, learn, connect. Our new tagline is there, and it's actually in writing in the children's department. We're completing our furniture makeover. We have a few things left to do. We're going to be putting in our new gates and self-checks within the next couple of months, so we thank you for your patience in this rebuilding of our department, and we're very excited about the changes that have been made possible through your generosity and the generosity of our community. We have quite a few things that are going to be going on. We are having a Bob Ross learn to paint in a very gentle way on Saturday, April 1, and that is an after-hours program. It is a program for fees, so we ask for just a little bit of money to help with the supplies, and tickets are available at the desk, so we hope you'll do that with us. Also, we have our Lego Club coming up. Just check the website to see how that is, when that is going to be. We have Youth Art Month, and if you haven't been in to see the amazing artwork that's created by the children in our community-- created by the children in our community, I really invite you to come in and see the exhibit. It's during library hours. It'll be through the 8th of April, so hopefully you'll get a chance to see that before it's over. Our next film is on April 6th, so it's after we meet again next time, but is Comanche Station, so it's another Western offered by Dr. Jack Rhodes. And that is on the first Thursday of every month at 1:30, so we have our film series. We're also considering some other programming, including a documentary film series, and we hope that you'll help us plan that by just stopping in on our website and taking that survey. But please come and see us at the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg. Brennan, Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the common council. As mentioned, my report was sent out on Monday. Just want to highlight two important dates are coming up here. The first one is the kind of the kickoff meeting for the strategic plan for an arts community, or what we're taking it as Imagine Wapaka 2022. All the common council members should have received an invite on your desk this evening. That meeting is going to be on April 11th, 2017, located at the Danes Hall. We've been able to work with the new owners of the Danes Hall to open up their facility that evening to host all art and cultural enthusiasts that evening. Beginning at about 5:30, we'll have some hors d'oeuvres and snacks and some refreshments. Be able to meet with the new building owners and kind of express your ideas of possibly how to utilize that space. And then beginning around 6:15, we're going to start the kickoff meeting. Part of it is an update from the art summit from a year ago. And then there will be an activity facilitated by Ann Katz, who's the Executive Director of Arts Wisconsin, as part of that meeting. So we are looking forward to that. We are, just for the common council and any other committees that have been asked to come, we are going to make that a public announcement. So in the event that there's more than the majority, you'll be covered for that evening to come. So we invite everybody to be there. The other meeting I want to bring up is actually, over a couple days, we are trending towards an open house for downtown draft presentation of our downtown plan on April 24th. Our consultants will be here the 24th, 25th, and 26th of April, tentatively right now. We are working with the DOT on our exceptions request. We are hearing positive news coming out of that right now, as of last week. There is one slight downfall, is that because of funding with the state, our project will most likely be pushed back a year to between 2020 and 2021, is what they're telling us right now. It may get moved back up, but with the engineering taking about two years, we'll be ready for it one way or the other. But for common council members, I just want to highlight, April 25th, at 6:00 PM, we're hoping to have a workshop with you guys here at City Hall. Our consultants will be providing everyone that evening kind of a draft presentation of the downtown plan. You'll be able to hear the input that we received from the open house. But it's also an important time, as Kathy, myself, and Justin will be actually presenting to you guys kind of a three-year outlook on a multitude of projects, not only just the downtown, but also we're looking at some periphery work with our city parking lot and Rory River View Park. We'll also be presenting kind of an updated CIP project list and how all this is going to get funded at the end of the day. So please mark your calendar for that evening as well. And then I just, I'll highlight one project. We have another microbrewery that has made an application with my department. They'll be on the agenda with the Plan Commission next month, but they are looking to go into the former family center on Churchill Street. So starting to see some activity over on that part of town, and there's been a couple other inquiries as well. So hopefully that will start moving forward soon. Any questions?
Brennan, thank you. Public Works, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. Starting on our wastewater side, we just started our whole effluent testing, our wet. I really enjoy this one because it's where we send our effluent to a lab. They put it in aquarium. They introduce some organisms. After a week, if they're still alive, we pass. So I always think that's kind of a neat test. Our staff has agreed to work with the police department. They have their generator outside their building. Jesse Landry actually will be performing the maintenance on that and saving the police department a pretty good amount of money over the next few years. Street sign, we had a lot, or street side, excuse me, we had a lot of signs and trees that we had to clean up and signs to replace and trees to clean up with all that wind we got a couple weeks ago. We ordered our compactor attachment for the backle, and that is en route. We're looking to get a new lawnmower, which I'll be talking about later tonight. The LED lights on Fulton Street are still just half-done. We had that really nice weather about a month ago. We got going on it. We're about the same spout as we were before. So now is still a really good time to see the comparison. If you want to drive down Fulton Street at night, you can compare the LEDs from the high-pressure sodiums and see it just across the street. Lake Street, we had a pre-bid meeting earlier today. Where contractors were allowed to come and ask questions. We had only just two contractors show up, but it was still very, very helpful, very informative. I'm trying to work some of the kinks out as we go. And working over to the water side, we'll still be pursuing that DNR money for the lead service line replacement. Water Department is looking to, and setting up a plan for some hydrant painting. We're kind of phasing this over multiple years. So right now, we're looking at trying to get 80 hydrants repainted this coming year, starting about from Hardee's going to the west side of town. Facilities, there's a focus program where we could order 50 light bulbs per address for only $2. These four-foot, we don't have any in here, the four-foot fluorescent style, which is a really good deal. So we got that for as many buildings as we could. For the larger buildings such as City Hall and Library Rec Center, it's a good start. Some of the smaller buildings, like our street garages, sewer plant, it's pretty much going to take up those whole buildings, so an excellent program that we got into. We're still working with Bauer to upgrade the lights in the library. Out in the entryway of City Hall Library, we're looking to possibly upgrade the security panel. Those controls are getting old, as with the building, they're 19, 20 years old. So we're looking to see what that's going to mean, just to do a basic upgrade or maybe to try to get something a little bit more fancy with more kind of remote controls to it. Just the early stages of looking into that. Also with the entryway, we got a quote from Christensen's to repaint. We have not decided what we're going to do with that, but we may look to freshen that area up as well. And finally, we made our switch. Our uniform and rug company, we switched over last Wednesday. The guys look sharp and the rugs are nice.
All right. Any questions, comments for Justin? Parks and Rec, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report is on page 20 of your packet. Just want to hit on a few things. First, the cemetery in Parks Croupperson Position. We're in the hiring process of that right now. We have it down to two finalists with a target start date of April 10th. Our senior center, want to give a quick update on a fundraiser they had and a big event at the rec center. The WDOX Home Show was at the rec center on March 4th and 5th. It was a success. They were happy. It sounded like the people attending were happy. So we look forward to doing that again in the future. The senior center sold concessions as they have the last three years, and they use that as a fundraiser, so that works out well. Upcoming event, our youth center staff has been working hard on another one of their kind of different events that they're trying to do on weekends, and that is a father-daughter dinner. That is going to be April 28th from 6 until 8:00 PM. We're going to limit that to 40 tickets. We're going to have it in the lobby of the rec center. So that'll be a neat little event that will be new to us. Angie behind me has actually given us some advice as she worked on the one downtown, the farm-to-table dinner. So thank you, Angie. Registrations for baseball and softball, as well as Babe Ruth are now underway. So we're going through that process. We have meetings in the valley for our Babe Ruth leagues. We have multiple board meetings and some setup stuff as far as the draft goes and seasons. Andrew's doing a fantastic job with that. Adult recreation, we have our women's volleyball, coed volleyball, men's basketball going on right now. It's, with all that, our leagues are running four nights a week in the rec center. And I believe that is all I wanted to touch on, other than what's in my report.
All right. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Next, Chief Ozell.
Thank you, Mayor. My report starts on page 25, and looking at the first line, I see that there's a correction that needs to be made. The Police Commission and I actually did meet on Tuesday, March 14th. It indicated we didn't, we did, it was February, we didn't meet. My report is mostly informational. I just want to touch on a couple of events that's coming up for us. Next Tuesday, March 20th, 2017, at the Bread Basket, the police department is going to be over there and serving food to the people that come in. This is being accomplished by the funds that were donated from past Commissioner Tom Godfrey's family in his name. So we're going to continue to do that in the community. I think it's very strong that we continue to build the relationships that we have been. So I'm looking forward to it, and I know a lot of the officers enjoyed themselves last year when they did it. The other thing, I guess, that's not in my report, I don't know how many of you have seen the news lately, last week with Officer Zubey. He didn't understand what the power of Facebook was by putting his, by us putting a post out there as how the news media got a hold of it. But he went above and beyond, and there's an individual that had, in their house, they had a stolen Packers autographed football, and it's really upset this individual. And Officer Zubey took it upon himself to reach out to the Green Bay Packers, and they were able to kind of put together a basket for him of memorabilia from the Green Bay Packers. So he was able to bring that back to this individual, and it really made his day. And according to his mom, she hasn't seen him smile that much. So I give a lot of credit to Wes in regards to that. And then just the last thing is Diana Flightoff, she actually started her 11 years of with the Wapaka Police Department back in February. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Josh, what's going on in the computer world?
New laptops have been distributed to staff. Aaron has one of those, and that means better laptops in rooms like this from hand-me-downs. Our new file server is here, and I've been working on starting that project this week. We've got our new phone server installed, I think, two weeks ago, and that was to replace the server that failed on New Year's Eve due to the power outage. We're in the process of getting onboarding software set up, and that's going to handle the process when staff is at it. All the different forms they need to fill out, all the different things that need to get done, it'll handle employee exits. And Aaron's kind of the one that brought that, just because of the dozens of employees they hire each summer to help that process, and we're going to use that citywide. So we're going to start setting that up with the goal to have it ready for his department for this summer. We finally got a new contract from AT&amp;T for long distance. We fell out a contract, and we're paying about $1.50 a minute for long distance. New contract gets us to $0.04 per minute. Community media side, I've got a couple volunteers that are interested on getting local bands on the radio station and TV station, and I met with one of our volunteers yesterday, and that process is moving ahead. We talked to a number of bands who are excited about the opportunity that we're presenting, and I think April, we're going to get that going. And with Wapaka Online, the roller coaster of weather has delayed some projects, and it looks like things are slowly starting to get nicer, and that makes it a lot easier for my staff there to get their jobs done. So we're getting caught up and ahead on some different projects and upgrades. And then our new hire, Forrest, has an interest in doing some sales calls for us. Normally, technical people don't like going out doing that sort of thing. He's very interested in doing that, so shortly, we're going to send him out to start meeting with businesses to either check on how our service is doing for them or to try to convince them to make a switch if we might be a good fit. And then electronics recycling is coming up Friday, April 28th, 10:30 till 1:00, and we'll be holding it in the parking lot across the street from the fire department.
Thanks, Josh. Henry, you're up.
Mayor, thank you. My report's on page 31. Not too much to report. Just going to piggyback on to Brennan's comment about the arts and culture meeting. Hopefully, this will go well and we'll get some good participation. Mayor, you did mention we are having our council meeting, our next one on Wednesday, April 5th, because of the election, so please, everyone, come on out and participate. My routine kind of badgering of you on the council to make sure you do your emergency management course online, and I'll send you a little email reminder. 1917, the National Guard began here in Wapaka. Very unique for a community our size to have a unit formed, and the historical society is making some effort to recognize that coming forward. So you'll be hearing some more about that in the coming months. Been asked to serve on a working committee. I think they want council to do a few things with that, so Mayor, I'll be reaching out to you on that.
I'd like to shoot the cannon, I'm in.
Yeah. No weaponry so far. And then finally, I've been working with Josh a little bit, the Tim and Joy Neville, you probably saw the announcement, Forward Together grant opportunity, and we've been working with the school district, and Peg was even involved, getting some comments from our area libraries of trying to put together a unique application to the Nevels for funding consideration as a way to really expand our footprint in some meaningful ways that could help a lot of people that right now just don't have internet access. So I'm excited to put that together. Hopefully, we'll be successful. Mayor, I think that's it.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Henry. All right, let's move on then. We have unfinished business. We have resolution number 1383. This has to do with the sidewalks in, within the city. Justin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the final resolution, final reading. There was the public hearing at the last council meeting at 5:50, which went through and allowed comment, basically detailing our sidewalk removal program. And as you remember, we focused on Lake Street, which we're having our roadway project, and we included the sidewalk replacement there as well. So the listed names and addresses are shown with the estimated cost, and that is the estimated cost of the property owners. So basically, the cost to the city is matching that, so it's a 50/50 split between the city and that person. The actual cost is, will be assessed as the project moves along, and we have actual bid prices, and the work is completed, measured, and paid for, and it will be assessed as detailed in the letter, typically done in the past.
So what we'd be looking for then is an approval of this license report number 1356.
Resolution.
Resolution, okay. What did I say?
License report.
Okay. I was reading the next one. All right. Resolution number 1356.
Eighty-three.
Just checking to make sure people are listening.
Where is this? Sandy?
Page five.
Page 126.
All right. Let me start again. We're looking for an approval of resolution number 1383. Motion by Hackett, second by, I'm glad you guys are paying attention though. Second by Chestnut, that we approve of resolution number 1383. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mio.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Gillian Peterson.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right. Next, we have new business. This is a license report 1356 for a Class B fermented malt beverage license and Class C wine license for Jazz Petrol Mart Incorporated on Fulton Bar &amp; Pizza. 1045 West Fulton Street. Henry, any?
Richess Sitco is now in new ownership, and Mr. Singe is here. He went, we're looking to transfer the license, and he being the agent of the new establishment. I don't know if anyone has questions for Mr. Singe or not?
Sing.
Sing?
Sing.
Move to approve license report number 1356.
Oh, you got him off awful easy. Singe, yeah. Singe?
Singe.
Move to approve license report number thirteen fifty-six. Oh, you got him off awful easy here, but, yeah, go ahead.
Second.
Without even a welcome.
Yeah. Um, okay, we have a motion by Keeland, I'm sorry. Uh, second by Mayo, that we approve of license report number thirteen fifty-six. Again, this is a Class B fermented malt beverage license and Class C wine license, and this is just basically a transfer, um, from Rich's, uh, Sitco to, uh, the, the new owner. Uh, any discussion?
Wish you the best of luck.
Good luck.
Are you guys gonna be competitive? Uh, they're brothers, and they're across the street from each other, yeah.
I figured I'd be to address our competitiveness.
Yeah.
Stay a part of the committee.
Awesome, yeah, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else? We'd be look, uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. And then, just along with that, we have, uh, license report number thirteen fifty-five, which is the arcade amusement device license for that same property. We'd be looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Whitman, second by Dave Peet Peterson, uh, that we approve license report number thirteen fifty-five. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Good luck, guys, uh, appreciate you coming in. Where is Monica on here, you guys? She on? Let's, let's, let's go to F., huh? If, if everybody's okay with that?
Sure.
Uh, let's go to F. It's a contract for services between the City of Wapaka and the Humane Society of Wapaka County, and Monica is here tonight, so, Monica, hi.
Hi. Um, when I wrote the letter that I sent out, I was under the erroneous assumption that we just followed the state laws, and it does, uh, regarding stray animals, um, which we do, but it also goes further on the county and the city ordinances to say that we hold animals for seven days. So, the state has changed their stray hold to four days, and I don't know if that's something that you wanna consider doing or not. Um, it's not really gonna affect our contract in any way, as I explained on the, um, for us to the letter, um, except that I should, you know, if you're gonna change the number of days you want us to hold, is what will change in there. Um, so, I'm not sure where you wanna go with that.
What, well, what's your recommendation, Mark?
Um, well, I did do a quick look up of how long it takes people to reclaim animals, and over the past year, dogs are reclaimed fairly quickly, usually in two days or less. That's the average. The average cat that is reclaimed, which we know that's not a huge number, but it could be, you know, five or ten percent of the stray cats we get a year, um, they're reclaimed in a little over seven days. So, giving the cat owners a little bit more time to reclaim their animals could save the city some money, because, as you know, when the animal is reclaimed, the person claiming the animal pays all the fees and the city doesn't. So, my recommendation would just be to leave it at the seven days like it is. I don't think it's gonna be a huge difference money-wise at any point in time, because when they're, um, when they're doing this four-day stray hold at the state level, but then they're really being sticklers as to how many partial days you're holding them and whatever, and they said that they, um, that, you know, that was gonna be looked at more closely with the shorter stray hold than it was ever paid attention to at the seven-day stray hold. So-
So, you're suggesting to leave it as-is?
Yeah, and I can change the wording in the contract to reflect that and just prepare a new contract for you.
Okay. We okay with that? Any questions of Monica, since we have her here? All right, uh, we'd be looking for a motion to approve, uh, the, now, this is a three-year contract, um, that will run through, uh, May 1st, 2017, through the April 30th of eighteen, nineteen, twenty. April 30th of 2020, then. Okay, we'd be looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Whitman.
Second.
Second by Chestnut, that we approve of the three-year contract, uh, for the Humane Society of Wapaka, uh, ending, uh, May 31st, 2020. Any discussion? If not, uh, Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Paul Mio?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Hi, thank you, Monica.
Thank you, I'll get that new contract right over.
Sounds good. All right, uh, next, we, let's go back to, uh, letter C, which is the City Hall Office Furniture Replacement Purchase. Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in my, uh, item that I sent out on Monday, um, we, uh, had included in the 2017 capital improvement plan, uh, furniture, replacing the furniture in the city hall, um, just to finish up the project with the painting and the carpeting and, and continuing, just like the library's been doing on their side. Um, we have some furniture that, uh, in fact, uh, Henry's desk and, uh, several other department heads have old typewriter desks instead of regular desks. Um, so, uh, we're looking at getting more ergonomically correct, uh, furniture. Um, each of those proposed workstations have, uh, a lift station so that the person can, uh, stand instead of sit, uh, and work at their desk, um, to help, um, with, um, providing a variety of, uh, I wouldn't say positions for them for, for working and making, instead of, uh, a sitting position. Uh, we also, um, looked at, uh, replacing some of the, placing the chairs, uh, as, as you can see, some of our chairs in our, um, conference room are, are the older chairs, and you almost feel like you're sitting on the ground with them. Uh, and, um, we did, uh, when I did this proposal, uh, I had a kind of a ballpark idea, um, but when I got the proposals from, um, CJ and Associates, which, uh, I've done business with in the past, um, fifteen years with, out of, uh, New Berlin, and, um, I also had, uh, the proposal from Office Outfitters locally, and, uh, the proposals came back, uh, simple, comparable. Uh, CJ, uh, has one product line that would, um, be able to be used for all of the offices, uh, whereas, um, Office Outfitters, um, there was, uh, pieces from different, his different, uh, lines to be able to, um, make up the, the configurations that the department, uh, was looking for in each of the offices. Uh, instead of, um, awarding the full contract to CJ, I did, um, cherry-pick his proposal and took out, uh, his, um, main, uh, office furniture, like, uh, lateral files and, and the chairs, because Office Outfitters did have a much lower price. Uh, so, um, looking at doing all of the offices in the city hall portion, which is the city administrator, director of IT, director of public works, building superintendent, um, my office, the community development, um, director's office, the assistant assessor, the building inspector, and the main office in administration. Um, that, uh, that, um, contract would be for thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. And then, from Office Outfitters, the filing cabinets and seating, and that would be replacing all of the guest chairs, all of the desk chairs, um, the conference room chairs, and lateral files, and that would be approximately sixteen thousand six hundred, um, with about a five-hundred-dollar contingency. Um, I did get updated pricing from, um, Bill Zimmerman from Office Outfitters, and, um, they, he had some lower prices than what I had estimated, and, um, it, it'll give us maybe about two thousand dollars worth of contingency, because in my experience, we've, um, when you do this kind of large remodeling with office furniture, there's always an extra file cabinet, an extra chair, so there's, there'll be about two thousand extra with the fifty thousand five hundred. Um, this would be included in the 2017 capital improvement state trust fund loan, um, as proposed, uh, that we'll be bringing back once we have the road project costs. Um, so, that's what I have.
Uh, before I open it up for questions, Kathy, tell us, uh, what, what did we have budgeted for this?
We had forty thousand dollars budgeted.
And we're at fifty thousand and five.
And we're at fifty thousand five. And the reason why is the original one, I wasn't planning on, um, going in, doing, uh, several, some, some of the offices and replacing, uh, the conference room and guest chairs, so it added more costs, but once we looked at the blue chairs, them not matching, and some have wheels, some don't have wheels, um, these all have casters, uh, the conference room chairs will be all, um, adjustable chairs, um, so that you can accommodate seating instead of what we have with permanent seating that we have.
Questions?
Do you anticipate any recovery of funds from the sale of the furniture?
I am hoping, um, but based on the furniture sales the library had, um, they, uh, we only garnered two hundred dollars on the sale of a bunch of furniture. Um, it might help with, uh, the fact that we do have, you know, some furniture, but because our furniture that we're replacing is between twenty and thirty years old, and is really, really worn and not in the best of shape, I'm not expecting to regroup anywhere near. Maybe, maybe the cost of the shipping, but that's about it, so.
Good. Other questions?
Yeah, question. I, you know, I came to talk to you this morning about this, but it seems like when the other departments go out for bids on this, they usually have three bids. Why did you only just go to the one place, like we talked about, and then you went to Office Outfitters after that? Shouldn't you have gone out and got three bids like the other departments did?
Well, I could've gone and, and gotten another one. Um, I guess my, my thinking was is, um, I had, um, my experience with, with CJ and Associates, I've done three other office, um, remodelings with them, um, their staff and their, um, um, customer service, they stand behind, uh, everything they, they, they install, uh, and then I opened it up to a local person. Um, yeah, if I would've opened up somebody else, I'd probably get somebody from the valley, um, or somebody else, uh, from maybe Stevens Point or Madison, or maybe even another Milwaukee one. I, I didn't advertise for that, 'cause I didn't, um, I didn't feel that, uh, it warranted it, but, you know, I can, I'd be more than happy to put it out for proposals again, if that's what council asks me to do.
Well, it just seems like if the other departments are doing that, then the lead department should also be, you know, set an example for the rest of their department.
I can, like I said, I could, I don't have a problem with putting it out again, if that's what the council wants me to do.
I have a few questions also, um-
Chuck, are you, I'm sorry.
Are you done?
Okay, go ahead.
I thought he was done.
That's fine.
Um, I think Chuck and I were both called regarding this, but one of the things Chuck covered is how did the, the bids go out, um, and, you know, it's, I think the one bid was in, and then you thought, maybe you needed another bid? Is that what I'm kind of understanding?
No, actually, what I did was, um, I had CJ and Associates come in, and, um, because that is what their business is, is just furniture. That's, all they do is office furniture. They came in with a design, with their design team, um, for free, and measured, and, uh, got questions answered from each of the departments as to what kind of, um, storage that they were looking for, and, and drew up all of the, um, floor plans, and then, uh, quoted it. And I, at the same time, after I got, had gotten the drawings from CJ and Associates, gave those same drawings to Office Outfitters and asked Office Outfitters to quote it. So, I did, I did the same, that, um, proposal, if, and if Bill wanted to come in and, um, change something or, or, uh, couldn't make something work, uh, he was more than willing to, to come in and, and take his own measurements. I, uh, I had opened it up to him to, to do that.
He did say he had spoke to you on several occasions, um, so, but I just wondered if there was any direction, when you're getting the bids, what goes on, or the company you kind of chose to come in and do this, or do the design, um, if they were given any specifications or directions, or-
No, each, each office was given that they could, they could decide what they wanted in there, and, and each of the offices, um, I didn't, wasn't in, in any of that. They decided this is what they were looking for, for storage, um, they had, um, Bill brought in chairs for them to sit on, um, CJ, uh, I didn't go any farther with the chairs, um, they just proposed, uh, a, a chair that they were looking at. So, I guess that's, you know, I guess that's what I'm, because it's so individual, unless you have, open it up and say, okay, this is exactly what I want, now, everybody, here prop, here get a, here get a quote from somebody, I had already had CJ do all the drawings. Um, I could have had, had Bill come in and, and do the same thing, and, and start all over with each one. Um, I thought the department heads, uh, did, uh, a good job with sitting down and getting measurements and knowing what they wanted, uh, and, uh, at least then, if I had something from CJ that this is what was going to be, uh, in the office, then, then what was going to be proposed from another office off of, Outfitters, um, as far as their line? There's, there's two, um, different lines that, uh, are being, uh, proposed by Office Outfitters, and only one through, um, CJ and Associates.
Okay, that, that being said, um, what is the total difference in the two quotes with the chairs, or however you did it?
Um, when I, I came down, I did not, um, I did not go through and pick out, uh, all of the chairs, only because, uh, when I came down with the quotes, um, I didn't, I just pretty much discounted, um, the Office Outfitters one, because it wasn't going to be the same line for all the offices.
But it would only, the only one talking with you today that would've been different would've been Brennan's, and you wanted to get the rest?
No, that's not what I said, that's not what I meant.
Okay.
Brennan's office already has the same line that CJ and Associates has, and our back conference room.
Okay.
So, putting all of the furniture together, then it would've been different in Brennan's offices, um, but I was looking at, um, the possibility of making it the same throughout the whole office.
So, how did Brennan's furniture arrive? How was that given? Was that from CJ?
Yes, and it was under five thousand dollars. He had money within his budget.
Okay.
And he needed to have office, uh, workstations for his, uh, part-time help, and, um, he had come to me, and I had told him about, um, my work with CJ and Associates, and he wanted something that he knew would fit into the office, and, um, since it was just, I think we paid like four thousand dollars for it, um, we just went with that.
What are your thoughts about buying locally?
I, um, tried to buy locally, um, I offered, um, to split the, the, the project between a local, um, pers, local vendor with the, uh, lateral files and, and the chairs, which is about one-third of the whole project, and just buy the furniture that would be installed, um, from, uh, a furniture dealer. That's, uh, that's the reason why, um, I did split the, the project up, is to keep- That's, that's the reason why I did split the, the project up is to keep it so that there was still part of the project being funded, purchased locally, but the, the furniture part being done by a furniture dealer.
Just to go along with Lori's question, office outfitters, what was their quote on just the furniture part of it?
$42,934.
So where CJ's is at 32,800, office outfitters was at 42,000?
Correct.
Okay, and then what was CJ's bid on the part that you're suggesting that we bid to office outfitters?
I did not break, I don't have a total for that, but I know that the prices were much higher than, like for instance, the five three drawer, 42-inch steel lateral files. Bill is quoting us 3,100 and they were 3,700 from CJ. So they are, they were more expensive from CJ. The chairs were 132 apiece and Bill's price is 121. So I did, I did pick Bill's price because they are lower. Same thing with the chairs for the, for the desks. Bill's quoting 324. CJ was 369. So there was, there was savings by using the local vendor with, with the chairs and the files.
And you've talked to both vendors and they're okay with splitting it?
Yes.
Okay. And again, CJ's is $10,000 less than, than what office outfitters is. I mean, I'm taking your word for it because I don't have any of that in front of me.
It's $10,000 less than the $50,500?
No, no. If you would've went with office outfitters completely.
It was 42.
It would've been $60,500.
If I would've added the, the conference chairs and, and the guest chairs to, to Bill's quote, yes.
Yeah, so.
So it's not an I for an I kind of quote then, huh?
It, well.
No, because Bill didn't quote, I didn't, he didn't include that portion into his original quote.
Is that because they didn't know or he didn't?
I wasn't quite sure. I added, once I saw when CJ's bid came in, I added, got prices for the furniture to finish up the deal, to, to finish up the project. Otherwise, we're, I'll be more than happy not to, to buy conference chairs and desk chairs and guest chairs and we can keep the ones that we have now, which look like these. And that's fine.
Any other questions or comments?
So if I'm remembering the beginning of this, we had a budget figure in mind and we're going to be 10,000 over that. Is that correct?
Correct.
If this is all said and done?
Right.
As it stands now. And so you just mentioned possibly not buying certain things. Would that alleviate that gap?
Sure, I could get away with not doing the lateral files and, and the guest chairs and take out the whole office outfitters bid. Or rebid. I don't have a problem rebidding the whole thing.
I guess what, if, what kind of makes me ponder is that there, there really wasn't a opportunity for more than these two bidders to bid on the project. And that's, that just is, doesn't sit right with me.
Okay.
To be honest with you.
You know, you do take into consideration that CJ's did come in and they did do their drawings and I'm assuming they met with all the department heads or whoever, individuals, and they found out what they wanted or what they felt they needed for their improvements and so on. And appreciate that. And we also do that, obviously, within the public works. We usually hire somebody to come in and do the specs for us before we actually spec it out. And I appreciate that they did it for free. You know, and that's got to be worth something. But I, I tend to agree. I, I don't think there's any urgency to this, quite honestly. And, you know, I guess, first of all, I, I guess I would like to see the bids side by side. Not that I don't appreciate your recommendation, Kathy. This is just me talking, by the way, but, and I don't know how it works if you ask for a third bid now that we know what two of the bids are out there, you know? If anybody does their homework, they're going to come in a lot lower than, or somewhat lower than what the bid is already unless you reopen the bids completely. So, I mean, the one thing that I think I got out of this whole thing is, is that what Kathy did is she split it up. And by splitting it up, we're, it's more than what it cost us, but we're still saving $10,000, you know, because office outfitters furniture part of it was $10,000 more than CJ's. And I, you know, so I could see that part of it. And then she also found that, that office outfitters was cheaper in another area. So.
I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I see on the, on the drawings in here, you have Brennan's office and you just said he has new furniture in there?
His outside office where his staff, his two part-time work are the ones that have the newer desks.
Okay.
Kathy, we budgeted 40 and it's going to cost 50. Where's the extra 10,000 going to come from?
Well, I'm hoping that some of the other projects that are in our capital improvement program for 2017 come in, come in lower. But if not, then we would have to adjust the amount that would be budgeting for borrowing. But again, you do not know at this time what the road project for Lake Street is coming, going to come in at. So until I have those numbers, we don't have a firm number for borrowing for this year.
Then maybe it's just a good reason to wait a little bit because those bids are coming in?
They should be in in April.
April, Doug.
And I know that you mentioned that the first, what is it, C whatever?
CJ has, there's some price increases on some of the, on, I believe, on some of the furniture. So I'm looking at, that's, it's, if anything, it's a 3%. I'm not concerned. I can probably negotiate with him if that's the case. But if I go out for bid, I don't have a problem opening it up again. That's true.
I would at least like to wait until the Lake Street thing gets, so you can see it side by side and, you know, technically we're 20 over if you go to 60, you know, save 10, but you're still 10 over. So it might just be, move as there's no urgency, as you say, wait and just make a more educated decision at that point where we can probably cover or hopefully cover without needing to go back for another 10 grand. Pressure on Justin.
I think it behooves us to try to stay with the budgets we've set if we possibly can. I mean, I know things change or kind of, I guess it's something we should really strive for, my opinion.
Any other comments? We do have it on the agenda as a vote. Would you prefer, is anybody, would anybody like to make a motion on the approval that's recommended by Kathy?
I moved to table until April, our first meeting in April is, we're going to hear back about that.
I would make it the second.
Second meeting in April.
Okay, so that would be the 21st.
I have one question. What about the rebid? Is she supposed to rebid this?
Well, I have, we have a motion.
Okay, sir.
To table this. Okay, so we have a motion by Hagan, second by Dave Peterson, that we table this motion until our second meeting in April, which is April 18th. Any discussion? If not, I do voice. Thank you, Sandy. All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. I don't know the answer. No, you can ask your question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm just wondering, are we looking for Kathy to rebid this? Or to get a, a better knowledge of what's being looked for exactly? I mean.
I can do side by side if you want to, a different presentation of the information if that's what you want, or I can rebid it. I have time to, to rebid it.
Well, as the mayor said, if you're going to rebid it, you just got to rebid the whole thing because, you know, there's two numbers that are known out there right now.
Right. I'd have, anybody who's coming in would have to come in and present. So that means, you know, asking them to interview the department head and, and go through that.
Would they have guidance from you? I mean, so they're coming in and they're going office to office. Shouldn't there be a guidance what's needed in each office maybe?
That's, well, my office is different than Henry's office and different than Justin's and different than Brennan's, you know, what, what the function is. Brennan does a lot with plans, so does, so does Justin's. So they need a lot more desk, you know, tabletop info, you know, than, than I do.
Well, I think that's, you, when CJ's came in, they did get guidance.
They did that, so that's been done, okay.
From, from each of the, each, each person in their office. So my staff out in the front said they needed to be able to see the front counter and this is what the storage they were looking for.
Okay. Like for files and stuff, are these new file cabinets or are they in addition to file cabinets? What are the thoughts on that?
No, they're all new file cabinets, only because right now I have 36-inch file cabinets and I can only file left to right. I can't file front to back, which is easier to, in some offices to, to be able to file with. So that's, you know, that's the change into a 42-inch file cabinet instead of a 36.
And that's just for your office?
No, it's for Henry's office and it's for the front offices in the main area so that their filing is a lot more efficient from front to back.
Lori, just, it's the same file system that I have in my front area. The lateral file actually holds more than the traditional file cabinet.
Okay.
So that's why we had, especially in my area, because we have all these S files, all building files, everything else. That's why we went to lateral files in our front area, but it holds more space than what a traditional one does.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's, let's, let's get to this point right here. We tabled it till the second meeting in April. How many people would like to see this rebid? And this is just a, let's see a raise of hands here. Does anybody like to see this rebid? Raise your hand. Okay, let me ask you this. Would you like to see Kathy give us a side by side comparison between CJ's and office outfitters? How many would like to see that? Okay, so that's what we're asking for you to do at, at the next meeting.
Right.
All right? Anything else on, on this bid? All right, let's move on then. We have amended 2016, 2018 cropping agreement. Justin?
Thank you, mayor. This is our cropping agreement at our wellhead protection areas south of town by well five and six. In the council packet, that starts on 133, goes to 134 and then a map on 135. Now, the part that's being amended is the total acreage that falls underneath this cropping agreement. And as you are all well aware, we have these cropping agreements to limit and reduce nitrates into the groundwater and into our water supply. So with this reducing the total acreage, we are, it should reduce our total cost because we compensate these, these farmers, excuse me, for planting these low demanding crops. However, it kind of reduces our control. But this one chunk of farmland, which is 90 acres located near Spencer Lake, has been determined that it has very little effect on our water supply from well five and six. Now, the additional map that Sandy distributed before the meeting is a little messy, but what it shows is the map that's in the council packet underneath the groundwater model that the DNR and USGS are working on currently. Those blue streaks, those blue lines represent water particles. And when our wells run, that's basically the direction, the route of where the water is flowing, where it's coming from. So if you can see it through the busyness, you can see that the field to the south, that 90 acres, is virtually not affecting our water supply at all. And it's the reason why we want to take it out of this agreement, thus saving us some money. And the fields that we're focusing on, just west, nearly west of County E, northwest of the wells and those still south. And, you know, this is early, still early in our investigation and, and what we're looking at doing. So this is just kind of the first step. And the goal of this whole process, when we started this agreement with the DNR is to, to better identify the areas that are contributing to our water supply. So this is, the first step in action is amending this agreement and reducing the acreage by 90 acres. The agreement is still in place through 2018 growing season, so 16, 17, and 18 growing season, so that has not changed. All we are doing is for the 17 and 18 year, or 18 growing season is just taking out that 90-acre chunk of farmland south of our wells.
Okay, so you've heard Justin's recommendation. We would need a motion then to approve this change in the agreement. Motion by Whitman, second by Keeland, that we approve amending the 2016 through 2018 cropping agreement for groundwater protection between the city of Opaquah and John Schrader. Any discussion? Sandy will call her all.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Sandy. And now we talk grass cutting.
Yes, we do. Thank you, mayor. So the next on the packet, starting one, page 160, or 136, excuse me, and going to 140, starting with my memo detailing our new lawnmower, which we put in our, our capital budget process. We put in there a $9,000 budget. The three bids that Roger Hanson got for this mower are over. We looked, inspect out the Hustler 93 5023 Super Z. It's a slightly bigger one than the one we have right now. And it's a brand new mower, but this is the one that we're settled on. We think it's the best mower for, for our street department and what we do with it. Now, we are over, we'll be going over budget on this by about $1,500. What I would like to do is to take the money we save in either, in the Baco budget, which we're under by, by about $2,500, and just flip that into the lawnmower or just wait for the sale of either, of either our existing mower or our existing Baco and just use that money and cover that difference. We will be putting the existing lawnmower. We will be putting the existing lawnmower in our old BACO on the state sale soon. We're expecting roughly $2,000, $3,000 for a mower, maybe $10,000 for a BACO, so we should definitely get enough to cover this difference. Included in there, you can see the three quotes we got in the specification for the Hustler lawnmower that we'd like to get. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the purchase of the Hustler mower from Larry's Farm Tractor Service for an amount of $10,450.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mayo, second by Chestnut, that we approve of the purchase of this Hustler Super mower from Larry's Farm Tractor, an amount not to exceed $10,450. Any questions? They don't do trade-ins?
I'm not sure about that. I'd have to ask Roger, but him and Jake want to put it on the state auction site.
They think they could get more than on a trade-in?
They think that's our best bet than trading it in.
Okay, okay. All right, any other questions? Sandy will call her all.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right, Justin, thank you. Next, we have more summer talk. Proposed pay scale for summer help in the Parks and Rec Department. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. This is on page 148 of your packet. I have a memo. I also have the attached pay scale right after that, page 149. This is something Henry, Justin, and myself have worked on probably about a month ago. We did so for a couple of reasons, and as you can see, these are full-time positions with both positions in my department and Justin's department on this pay scale. And the reason for that is that these are all labor positions that take on similar job duties, and at times, we feel like we're interchangeably. What you'll see, and the reason why we revisited this, one of the reasons was to be cost-conscious. We felt like these changes more accurately reflect the local market wages. What we did, when you look at the scale, is we actually worked backwards from what we're currently at. So in year five of the scale, in your packet, that is our current rate, and we worked backwards off of that, basically meaning new hires would ramp up over five years to get to where our current people are. One of the reasons for that is we wanted to reward longevity. We had people coming in, basically making the same thing that people were, that were there for 25, 30 years were at, so that was one reason. Another reason that affected my department more than it affected Justin's was we had some movement in between departments. We recently hired the Cemetery and Parks crew person, actually, last April, and he was with us for six months before he took a job, an opening in the Public Works Department. He's very good in both departments, but we didn't want to put ourselves in a position where we continued to have to rehire, go through that process, a lot of time and energy, and money spent on that. So we wanted to be able to lock someone in when we had a good person. So I did say that everyone in this pay scale, we'd worked backwards off of what their current rate was. The one exception to that is the Cemetery and Parks crew person, which is third from the top there. That is a lower rate than what we had about two and a half years ago, when we had Rick Martin for about 18 years. But it is higher than what we hired the person, Casey Martinez, last April at. And the reason for that shift was because of what I just explained with the interdepartmental movement. So those are the things that we tried to accomplish with this pay scale, and I would certainly open it up to Justin or Henry for any other comments, or anybody else for questions.
So this is just on new hires, though, right?
Yes, correct, correct.
Okay.
And anything approved by council as far as an annual pay increase, the people on this pay scale would get that along with what you see on the scale. So the scale would shift with that, if there was an annual pay increase for the rest of city employees.
So again, you're just setting up a five-year pay scale for beginning employees, and then, once you get to the fifth year, then they would just get raises based on what council approved each year?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions there? What do you think, council?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Peg.
My question on this is, this looks very different than all of the other departments and a scale that we currently have that hasn't been updated in, I don't know, since 2012. And I understand the need for this, because what they were working with before was nothing. But I think if you're going to start using this kind of scale, I think you have to start using that kind of uniformly throughout the department. There are other, there are other positions within the city that don't have a scale either. You know, the clerical workers, they, they're without a scale at this time, too. I think we need to address the whole city rather than just this department, although I understand why they need to do this at this time. I'd like to see things look more uniform across departments.
All I'd like to add, or I think that's a very good idea, Peg, and I think that this scale, this plan could be applied to almost anywhere, or any department, any person. Because what we, it's similar, like, right now, you get hired, you start 90%, you're on probation. After six months, you go right up to 100%, you're off probation. Well, this still uses that 90% and the six-month probation. After six months, instead of getting up to 100%, you just get a 1% raise. You're off probation, and then each year, you get a small increment until you're up to that 100%. So, I mean, it could be applied to pretty much any position, just using the same format of five-year, going down to 90, and then you get these small increments upwards, so.
I would appreciate looking at the other scale that's in place for all of the city as well. And I know that Kathy's department, there are people that, there is no scale, so that if somebody would leave, you're going to have a situation where you're not sure what their pay should be. And what we have is a minimum, a median, and a maximum for those positions as you hire in. So just, just a suggestion, I think it's time to look at that, that scale that's not been updated since 2012. So I'd appreciate that.
Well, let's make it clear, though, of course, we don't have a union. So, I mean, what we're doing is you're setting up basically union scales here by doing this. I mean, otherwise, it's really completely up to us to decide what we pay these people. You know, and I appreciate where we're coming from here by saying, this is where, this is where you're going to be in five years, and this is where we're going to start you. And I don't think that this, what this does, by what they're doing here, this doesn't change what we're currently doing. Alls it's doing is reducing the starting pay, okay? And I, I think that's why I think it's, it's something that, in my mind, is acceptable. And Peg, I don't disagree that if you guys need a model to follow when you're hiring people so that you're fair, we should set this up across the board. I don't disagree with that. But again, I mean, if we can find somebody to work in the cemetery for 12 bucks an hour, we could do that. You know what I'm saying? We could do whatever we want, so. I don't know if I made it any clearer or any muddier, but I, but I, I do, I do like the concept here, because I know that Justin has had a number of people within his department that have been with the city for 30 years and have retired, and now trying to replace them. What do we pay them, you know? I mean...
Yeah, we started this discussion more than a year ago, between the three of us, and Roger Hanson, and even some of the guys on the crew, and even the new guys were, thought it was odd that after six months, they were making just as much as, like, Randy Abrahamson, who's been here for 32 years. They can tell you almost where, where almost every catch basin is underneath 12 inches of snow, because the new guys are out there not really knowing which way to go. So, I mean, it's kind of, the crew is accepting of this and thinks it's a good idea to show that longevity and reward that, and basically show that, hey, these, these guys that have been here for a while mean something, and gives them something to work forward to. And each year, they're getting a little extra bump. That makes them feel good, too.
Yeah, and short of us starting to, as Alan would probably say, short of us micromanaging the department heads when they have to hire new people, we need to have something in place for them to base it on, so Kathy?
I think if you're going to be more rewarding for longevity, then you need to look at the Police Department Union, the Police Officers Union contract, where they do get a bump for their, you have a base rate for everybody, but the longer you're there, the more you get per hour. And if that's the case, then you're hiring somebody, and then you are rewarding somebody whose longevity. If you go into this, like the mayor said, you're now on a union scale. What happens if I have a deputy treasurer, that candidate that comes in that has 14 years of experience? Am I starting her at the starting pay? Or do I start her at year five? Now, do I have that capability to do that with a union, with a scale like this? I don't. I think if you're really looking for longevity, then, then the police contract model is more rewarding for those who are there longer. They do get, I think, 35 cents per hour for somebody who's been here more than 20 years. And then you have that difference based on a base rate, because everybody does have to do the same job. It's how long they've been doing it.
I would add that, I think this is a good plan. I would like to see bumps at 10 or 15 years as well, though, and I think that would, that would get to the issue that Kathy's going for.
So this is a good start?
Absolutely.
Okay, I mean, do you want to add the 10 and 15 to this at this time? Or is this a good start, and we can continue the discussion beyond the five years?
Well, I'd like to see them come back, I guess, and we don't have to make this decision tonight. So if they came back with bumps for additional increments...
But we do have one, sorry, Alan, we do have one position that this would affect.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, so I mentioned earlier in my report that we are, we have two finalists right now for the Cemetery and Crew Person position, so we're very close to offering somebody that position.
April 10th, right?
Yeah, that's our hopeful hire date when they start. The one thing, Alan, I think that's a good idea, the one thing I'll say about that is because we've worked off our current rate, if we had a 10-year bump and a 15-year bump, does that put the people that are at 10 years and 15 years currently higher than they currently are? You know what I'm saying?
It depends on the numbers you come back with.
So this would be reworked, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I, oh, does it? Okay, I thought you were talking about adding to this base rate. And I think Aaron is saying, do we take this rate and put it out 20 years and go backwards?
Are you saying that the five-year rate is the max that they get right now?
That's correct.
Okay, I didn't understand that. I'm not sure. I don't have a good answer for you.
Well, I think this is what they've requested tonight, you know, and this can be... If we, if we approve this tonight, this will be good for the first five years. So if you're looking at bumps for longevity at future times, then it would be in addition to what, to what you have on here right now, if we approve it tonight, which I think is, is what we're, we're thinking, is that we want to pay for longevity. But this is the top of the scale, right?
At year five, it is, yep.
You're at the top of the scale.
That's at the top of the current scale, yep.
And then, if we do that for longevity, then we got to look at all departments. You can't, we're not just going to be...
I think that's a broader project, and it'll take a number of months.
Yeah.
Careful what you're opening up there.
Yeah.
Or money-wise, and if you...
Or do you, and I don't think that's what they want to see here either, but they don't want to go out 15 years and say, this is the top of the scale, and now let's work backwards from there. Because that's kind of what they did here, is they, they went out, they went five years back, and the suggestion would be to go 15 years back? I don't know, you know?
Well, we went through a number of these options together and basically kind of shelved that, because it seemed very complicated to try and get this implemented in this timeframe. I guess one of the ideas was similar to PD, was at 10 or 15 years, or 20, whatever, it's just a fixed nickel, or 10%, or 10 cents. Not that it'd be like percentage raise, so they still get to their full rate, and then, once they hit this longevity, they'd get an extra nickel bump, or something like that, or 10%, 10 cents. But we left it off, I mean, we had a couple of ideas, Millen, we left it off just, because we did think it was getting a little too complicated. This was more clean-cut, it could be applied right away, and people, all the guys who are working right now would be grandfathered in. And the next time that I would be looking to hire, all my guys would have at least five years, so we wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be a factor of, you know, hiring a guy and having somebody kind of in the middle of scale bringing them down.
How long is this scale in place? I mean, how long are you asking for this to be permanent? Be put in some kind of resolution form, or, Henry, that's probably a better question for you.
I just think if we could get it in place and have it, again, we've heard a number of comments, we can look at it more organization-wide, spend some time on it. And if, I'm hearing, some type of longevity component of it, just let us work on it and come back. But this, I think, is really workable. It really does reflect the private and public markets. Remember, for those of you who've been in negotiations, right, you know, you couldn't consider the public or the private element here. And some of this work, we had some data from the Fox City compensation work that they did, and our local chamber was involved in that. So we had some local employers participate in all that. So we had a number of positions that could be looked at. And then the town of Rid Mountain just got done with a compensation study, and we had participated in that, giving them information, so we got a free copy. We got a copy of the report or whatever. So truly, this starting pay is really much more reflective of the local market than where the five-year pay. So we really are moving to be more market-oriented, so... But to do it across the other departments, I think, would be good, to get some consistency. But it's going to take some effort. But it's doable. I mean, we just need to spend a little time on it.
Well, I'd like to suggest that we at least approve the instant plan here, and then task department heads and city administrator with developing this by next budget cycle.
It's a lot of time, I think. What do you guys think? Good. Is that a motion, Alan?
I'll put that in the form of a motion, yes.
Motion by Keeland.
If Sandy can read it.
It wasn't in our work plans, but that's okay, we'll edit it.
Second by Pritchatsky, that we approve of the proposed pay scale for the hourly recreation and public works department employees. Any discussion?
I was also talking, I was also talking about coming back with the plan by the next budget cycle.
So you want that to be part of your motion, or you just want to tell them to do it?
Well, I can make it a separate motion or part of this motion.
Okay, it could be a part of this motion. I'm all right with that. So that we also task the department heads and city administrator, under the direction of the city administrator, to come up with a pay plan that would be citywide. of the city administrator, to, uh, come up with a pay plan that would be, uh, citywide, besides our union employees. Does that sound all right? And that's what you were asking for, Alan?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sandy will call her all.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
And Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have license report number 1357. This is an operator's license. There's one individual on there. This is, uh, pending payment of money owed to the city and background checks. We're looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Hackett. Second by Chestnut, that we approve license port number 1357. I'm sorry, was it Jillian?
It was Jillian. Right, right. You missed me twice.
Well, at least it wasn't Paul, and I said Lori. All right. Uh, Jillian Peterson was the second, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Uh, nothing tonight, uh, under issues or projects, Henry, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, going to communications recommendations of the mayor, again, just a couple of things. One, don't forget, uh, April 5th, uh, Wednesday, April 5th, instead of Tuesday, um, the first meeting in April, and then also, uh, we do this every once in a while, and I just want to make sure that staff understands that, uh, the importance of getting information to council on time. So when the packet goes out, let's make sure that your report is in the packet, and anything that you want council to, um, vote on or to discuss must be in the packet at that time. And I, I guess I, I go to the point as far as, uh, I'm sure there are circumstances where, that cannot happen, and, and you might need to do that, but I think almost always we should have this in our packet. I know we went a day earlier, but I know that it would be very helpful to all of us if we had all the information as soon as we can, so that we can make a, a good decision on what's going on. So again, a little bit of scolding, let's make sure we get our stuff in the packet, uh, by the time the, uh, agendas go out. Anything else, council members?
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Keeland, to adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is, uh, Wednesday, April 5th, 2017, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We're adjourned at, uh, 7:55 PM. Thanks, everybody, for watching.